Good evening. It is five, yeah, it is seven o'clock, okay. Welcome to April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two planning board meeting. First of all, I want to welcome our new ex officio, Sherry Burdick. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the first item on the agenda is?
We're a member down.
What?
We're a member down.
Oh, we are a member down. Actually, we're two members, yes. They welcomed her to you two months, two months ago, didn't they?
No.
No, she just got appointed.
Well, yeah, but she was here two months ago.
I was here a couple of weeks ago.
You were here a couple of years ago, but anyway.
We just figured that was nine years ago, so.
It goes back to me being sixty-five, doesn't it? Yeah, okay, thanks.
It took me a while to figure it out, too.
Welcome back, Jenny.
I've had to help you, thank you.
Thank you.
So who's, did he, did you sit on the hearing last time for this?
Yes.
You're appointed again. And since I appointed you, you also get to take the minutes because our secretary's not here.
No, that'd be cool.
No.
He's teasing you.
I, I hope you like seconds.
I think, I think Naomi's taking care of that.
Was that the, find me a grid, box of grid squares?
Yeah. So the first item on the agenda is Mariko LLC, where they plan, where real food, where real food market, yes. North Star Highway. Oh, you have it. Swat?
Sorry, do you want this? I have the rest of the folder. Do you need it?
I don't think so, but I'll take it just in case, I guess.
There's stuff from what's on from DOT.
DOT thinks here. So I must have more than one copy here.
Yeah, it's a chain, that's why, yeah.
Chain?
Looks like the same email twice, yeah.
I think so. Is it?
No.
Oh, it's not, oh, okay. Well, that's right, different data would be straight there. Come with me.
That's the end of the question.
Did we get a copy of the original driveway permit?
Should have been in one of the earlier sendings that we've gone to. We had talked to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation about seeing if we needed to update the driveway permit, and they basically came back and said our, our
Yes.
new use is, it wasn't necessary to resubmit the permit, so the one
It should be everything related.
Yes, but he says, at the end of the permit, he says, please note that there are no changes in the dimension of the original driveway, and no parking, he said, well, he said something else. All regulations and requirements, the original permit shall be adhered to by the applicant or their representative's successor. So what are the requirements of the original applicant, of the original permit?
I think it was for part of the, in how of the, how much traffic was expected, as well as the parking that would be in there, and most of that kind of comes down to that we don't do anything within a certain distance of the actual entry into the property, from the road, don't block the road, that kind of stuff. I tried to get a much more detailed explanation, but they weren't really responsive to that.
But didn't you get a permit?
Yeah, it's, well, it's the same permit.
The old permit?
Yeah, it's the old permit. They did not change it, they did not update, they said it wasn't, there, nothing that we were doing was necessary to update the permit. I was even hoping they would just put my name on it, but they didn't feel it was necessary.
The old permit didn't have any conditions or any other requirements, or?
No, it was, the permit was just specifying that there was both commercial and residential use for the road, and that we weren't going to block the road, that we weren't going to expand it beyond the current means, basically following that pattern, but that's all they told us. Again, they were not very specific. And they would not elaborate.
That's strange. He says in his letter, a copy of the original permit isn't close. We didn't get it.
Okay, I can
I can call Brian, I know him, he used to work, he used to work for me.
Oh, cool.
It's no problem.
I think it was in the original stuff.
He's sort of made him bounce sometime.
It should have all been in the original stuff that we sent over, but
So where, so you moved the food truck in the back?
Yeah, that was the recommendation from the last meeting.
Which is a great idea. My concerns are several things. One, the leach field is still going to be someplace over here. Back of the property. Correct?
For the
From the septic design you have approved.
We're not going to be instituting that septic design at this time.
I think you have to by DES regulations.
For what?
Because you don't have a septic system on file. Bruce went through that two months ago. I did. I have a feeling he's ready to If approval of a replacement ISD, individual septic design system, I'll remember what ISDS stands for, has been obtained pursuant to these rules for any reason other than to address a system failure as covered in A above, the replacement ISDS shall be installed. If the existing ISDS has not received construction approval and approval to operate under these rules or predecessor rules, unless the applicant submits documentation to show the existing ISDS has, was repaired or replaced in kind of compliance with requirements of work. So if you haven't received a construction approval for the old system, you need to put the new system in.
Okay.
And my understanding is the new system is up where you have the vendor truck and some parking spaces.
I can give you a copy if you want.
Sure.
The section on the bottom.
Okay.
And if I remember right, the system was underneath the vendor truck and the parking area up in
It was further in the corner, it was the, the far end. For the, yep, it would, it was all moved down there. The original intent behind it was to not affect the parking or the actual land as much as possible, so it was to put everything in the far corner.
We need to see that on this plan.
Yep, so I was not aware it was necessarily put as part of that map. We were just using that map because it was perhaps the most accurate one we had at the time. Is there anything
Personally, I'd prefer you put this on the septic plan rather than putting the septic on this.
Well, that is the septic plan, we just had removed the things that we weren't using anymore. So we can put, we can put them all back in and then
You overlaid and traced it, basically.
Is there anything else that needs to be addressed besides the septic system?
You show several parking spaces in the front setback on Quaker Street and on one fourteen. That would need a special exception. You can't, you can't put parking in the front setbacks.
Okay, those had been priorly proved. Okay, that we can, we can get them removed.
You made a mistake.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So it's the
Parking space has to be nine by eighteen. These are about nine by nine.
Okay.
I got a list.
Oh, cool.
I can give it to you at the end here.
Yeah, that would be great.
You have, there's about scaling this. Somewhere about forty-five feet. It's this line? Trying to remember now. Either way, you've got to have about eighteen feet between the parking spaces for the drive aisle to go through here.
Okay.
The distance here, you have forty-five feet, forty-five to fifty between the parking area, between the property line and the farmer's market. Fifty feet minus eighteen for the one parking space, minus eighteen for the other parking space, doesn't leave you very much for a dial.
Okay.
So I don't think you'll be able to double up the parking space here, or you have to shrink the farmer's market, one either or the other.
We will probably shrink the side of the farmer's market. We have not actually had a need to fill the whole space during the last two summers.
I don't know where the leach field is, but I, you either have to make sure it's going to handle H twenty loading, or you can't put any parking or traffic on it.
It, it will not be, the way it's being set up, from the plan that was submitted, we would not have any parking on it, so we'll have to remove the parking spots from that.
And then the driveway away from it.
Yes.
Has DPW come back, police or fire anything on the traffic for this? Have they said anything? I didn't see anything in the folder.
I would say not.
Okay.
Can't make them.
You can't make them. I'll be meeting with private fund Monday, I'll bring a copy of the plan, a reminder.
I'm worried about traffic. Either way. If you're going to do this, I assume we're saying you're coming in off one fourteen or in off Quaker Street? And you're driving out?
Correct.
So you're going to need do not enter signs on Quaker Street?
Yep, that would be the plan to turn the whole thing into a one-way, it should be marked on the map that way.
This, this is, this is not where, this is two-way here.
Correct.
Okay.
But the actual path
So you're going to have to have a do not enter sign here. So these guys don't come down. And the same thing, so these guys don't go up, they can't.
Correct.
So you're going to have to have three do not enter signs.
Yep. Do, do those need to be marked on the map, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, you don't, yes. Where was I? North Arrow? Title Block? Approval Block? So I could sign something, if and when we approve it.
Is that all on the list that you have there?
It's on the list, yep. I've got to cross a couple of things out, but it's all on the list. What exactly are you going to do in the food truck?
Coffee, basically brew coffee and hand out pastries. All the pastries will, have been pre-made and
Prepackaged.
Yeah, or, or in, like, you know, buy a dozen donuts kind of thing, or if they come in, in a larger box. But yeah, the intent is to have them all be prepackaged and just hand it out. And then just be brewing coffee in a coffee machine, and that's it. We're not, don't have a grill or anything like that to make stuff inside the food truck at this time, probably won't for the foreseeable future.
Hours of operation?
Our original start time is going to be six to ten, but we've set up, I think our original request was six to nine, six AM to nine PM, in case if we find that there's enough interest in the morning, as well as the afternoon, we'll open it up in the afternoon as well. But our, our intent is to start from six AM to ten AM.
So you're going to say six AM to nine PM, to cut
Yeah, yeah.
To cover yourself, yeah. You don't want to come back and say we're going to
Yeah, I think in our actual form and everything we submitted, it was
That needs to be on the plan.
Needs to be on the map, okay.
So since we're opening up the can of worms a little bit, what goes on in the commercial part of the building?
That would be the where real food market store.
How many square feet is the store? You have any idea?
It's small, is this going to be a conversation about the parking spots?
Well, that's where we're going to go, because you're going to end up with less than, probably less than twenty. Maybe twenty-five, if you're very modest.
So the, the original rule is when it came for like the retail space for the outdoor market and the indoor markets, that they're not open at the same time because of the parking spot issue. And with the food truck, no one should be parking for it, it's a drive-through. We will not be accepting walk-up people.
Okay.
You want to make sure there's a note to that effect on the plan, too?
Okay.
Oh, you say, yeah, hours of operation of the of the where farmer's market, of the where store and the farmer's market.
And if you want, a suggestion would be, if you're going to use a septic plan, it's kind of full, just right, right on there, that's sheet one of two.
Okay.
And on sheet two of two, put all your notes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Is the vendor truck a structure?
Okay.
Structure says that
Yeah, well, that's how our email keeps coming up on Gmail, is Matt Rivero, so
I know.
No worries.
I know what the structure does. Deer House is a structure.
I don't remember, like, I couldn't remember how much it was off the top of my head, but
The other thing that, because of how the food truck is licensed, we want to see a service contract for your sewage.
We got that.
Not just an email, an actual service contract from
Yeah, they wouldn't get us a service contract till we knew we were going to be officially open. So I can get their word or, or something written down beyond that, but to get an actual contract, I'd have to prove that we're going to be
Yeah, we'll need, we can do that, you know, we're going to need it before Craig signs the plan and gives the okay to open.
Okay.
But, I mean, we don't need it tomorrow.
Okay.
But we are going to need it.
Sure.
So are you going to, I assume, let's assume it's January, and we get a snowstorm. What are you going to plow?
You mean to get the
To stay open.
Well, we would just put it where the farmer's market is. Because the farmer's market isn't open throughout the winters.
You're going to plow all this snow over here?
Yep, pretty much. The, the field basically remains empty throughout the winter. There's not much call for an outdoor market during the snow.
So the farmer's market puts snow storage area in parentheses next to it.
Okay.
Last but not, well, should we, we should probably get a new driveway permit for Quaker Street, don't you think, Naomi?
That's a Benji call.
Okay. My last comment is landscaping. Do we want any? We've got parking spaces probably by scale of a foot and a half or so, or less, from the property line.
This, this is already treated, right?
Yep. This
He won't be there. The septic system is going to be there.
True. Do anything in the front? I don't, I don't, I'm just bringing it up.
You got a fence there, it doesn't look bad, I, I mean, I don't want to go obscuring a business, how do you do business if it's obscured?
I agree.
That's essentially his visibility. We can't hamstring him by telling him, he's got to put something there.
I saw it in the regs and said, oh, I might as well include that in my list.
And on the Quaker Street side, I mean, we don't want to put anything there, it's going to obstruct
He doesn't have
Visibility there either.
He doesn't have it there.
Yeah. So I mean, I'm okay with it, the way it looks, there's not much more you can do to it. Without hiding it in the bushes, which we don't want to do.
No, there's no sense in Is this somewhat gravelled?
Not yet, I, I wanted to get final approval, like, well, final understanding of what
Yeah, I would, I would not gravel it.
Yeah. When you guys let me know what it's going to be, okay.
I wouldn't spend the money in that.
Yeah, I will gravel it.
Could we get a dimension of how wide this is going to be?
I think we set it up to be a little bit larger than the actual
Yeah, they'll put the dimension on the plan.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You can have the plan, too. The only, the only reason I'm asked about the gravel is because if you have somebody get hurt back in here, an ambulance might have to get back here. In the middle of now, it could be a mess.
Yeah, it is quite muddy out there right now.
Yeah, it's mud season. That's real, that's all the questions I had.
I'd really like you to put a note on the plan saying that if you do anything inside the building that requires a food service license, that you're going to have to come back here.
Okay.
Because if, as long as you don't do anything, I mean, our original intention was you're only doing stuff in there that you didn't, you didn't need the food service license for.
So we just add a note, a food service license is not required for this. And then if he needs one, obviously he's in excess of the
Right.
Got to write small now, I got a paper.
I mean, that's essentially the tipping point for, we have to do something different.
Hey, verify it.
Drive by, drive by and order something.
Health officer in town, we have a health officer in town that is overseeing food service licenses.
Not yet, I mean, we have
She will be, or whoever is, will be.
Is that the animal control officer?
No, no, no. Stop that.
Trust me, I haven't been bothered because there isn't one. Damn hounds.
So my count was thirty parking spaces, if you lose, if you lost these two. And you're saying we're going to lose a bunch of them up here?
Yeah, you're going to lose all of those.
Was that ten? So you're down to twenty?
Probably fifteen?
Yeah, he might get a couple of them, it wasn't the entire length, he might get some over here.
But then this has got to be slid down.
Right. I mean, he is going to have to play with it to rearrange it, but the system wasn't the entire length. I mean, he might have a couple here, he might have a couple on that, I, I don't know.
It's primarily in the corner, so I'm definitely going to lose the corner, I think it was only about five parking spaces long in that corner spot.
Yeah, was it, was it forty feet long or something all the way?
Yeah, something like that. But that can be shown on the, on the new plan. But the, the biggest concern for parking spaces is going to be the actual outdoor market, and we can shrink the size of the space we need for the retail, for the outdoor market to meet that work, because the indoor market is, the physical size of the space cannot support that many people parking their car to come inside at the same time.
The other thing I'll gain, Craig, is the existing septic system is in here someplace. There's that up there, and now that opens this space up, too, so you might want to consider what that gains you by having that space opened up.
Well, we, we, the, the concern is really about the number of parking spaces we have, and we don't use the entirety of the retail square footage for the outdoor market as it is. We originally planned on having twenty tents set up on a regular basis, but over the past two years, the most we've ever gotten was sixteen, and that was one weekend. We generally average around ten to twelve, so we just don't need that much space. Unless something very significant changes in the attention we're getting for that outdoor market.
Are we worried about how much gravel he's putting down? I mean, he can steal a cross-section pretty quick.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
What are you afraid of, too little or?
Yeah, I'm worried about too little.
Well, yes or no, it's going to be a self-inflicted wound if he doesn't put down enough.
Yeah. Because I'm going to be dealing with getting the people stuck out of the yard. So I do not want to skimp on how much gravel I have out there to make sure that people can make the, you know, make the turns. I'd rather not have to worry about calling a tow service every couple of days to get people out of my yard.
Yeah, that would be a bad thing.
It wouldn't help the business any.
Yeah, so my intention, if, you know, once you guys approve what the road's going to be like, to, to make it a very serious and usable setup for the long term, so I don't have to worry about, even during the winter, dealing with people getting stuck out there.
Erosion control? I know it's flat. I know it's grass.
I mean
Theoretically, theoretically, it's going to tear out the topsoil and put in some gravel, and that's going to be the
I'm okay with him putting some silt fence around the construction zone until it all gets gravelled and restabilized. It's not going to run anywhere, I mean, the road's higher, both roads are higher than this.
Yeah, you've got a pretty good sized ditch here, if I remember right.
Yeah. So can you just put a note in your plan that you're going to put some erosion fencing, silt fencing up around there? Around whatever areas you're going to think disturb on the, if it's downhill to any of the lot lines from where you're going to be working?
Okay.
I mean, it's going to be obvious, it's going to be visible to everybody, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah.
It's not like it's going to be hiding on Abidja Bridge Road or something like that.
Bring it up because someone may see it and might, might cry Karen.
Yep.
And yell at me.
Gotcha.
You know, maybe, maybe along this wooden fence down by, you know, one fourteen, line that with silt fence around there.
Well, if he's not going to, are you going to gravel the whole thing?
You've got to put a septic system in up here.
That's true.
That's what I'm thinking, if he kind of lines here with silt fence, it's all down, it's all shedding this way, right?
Yep.
And that's where the ditch is.
Yep.
That's what I do. I don't, it's not going the other way. It's not going this way, there's a little berm there, too.
There's a little wetland there, wonder.
Yeah, but it was right to his tree and
Don't remember that.
I don't know what this little elevation mark is there for. It's lower here than here. Not by a lot, but a little more foot.
Any other comments?
I have one question. Is this, is this parking also here?
Yes.
Is this for the people that are at the farmer's market? Okay.
Yeah, primarily the parking that's around the field is specifically for the farmer's market. I don't imagine too many people will be parking out there to walk to the indoor market.
No, not when you gain those parking spots out there up front.
Yeah, so hopefully that'll only, people will only ever park in the places where they're actually walking to, but people park wherever they really want to anyways.
Anybody from the public like to speak?
The farmer's market, pretty much a weekend thing?
Yeah, I think we currently have approval for Friday or Saturday or Sunday, and we usually only do it on Saturday.
A one-day thing?
Yeah. We just have it on, on Saturday because we can't have the indoor store open at the same time as the outdoor store. Although if we shrink the number of, the retail space we need, we may end up having enough parking spaces, but we'll have to see what it actually comes out at the, the final.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Is there anything about the overflow traffic onto Quaker? That would be my only issue that I would think might be a problem. Traffic pulling out, I mean, so, because I know coming up there, once you pass Steve at the mobile, and you hit Quaker Street, you can see him backed up now with the traffic on one fourteen, that's just that's the only thing that I see is though.
No, I was hoping the police or Benji would weigh in on something there.
I've been asking the police to deal with traffic on Flanders Memorial since I've lived here.
I mean, relocate it where he has it over here, it's going to help a lot, because this
Yeah, that was, that was a very good idea.
The distance being increased is going to help tremendously.
Yeah, substantially. That's, that's, you know, in terms of concerns or questions, that's the only thing I see is a hiccup.
Make him make a right turn coming out.
Yeah.
That wouldn't work at all.
It would help the traffic.
Yeah, it wouldn't work for generating business at all.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how many people are going to really pay attention to that, if you have to make a right turn, I'm not sure how many people actually will.
The next person's driveway up the street
Yeah. I'm just going to pass the buck to the next person. The next road that's available that someone can pull into is just going to get the, get all that traffic.
I'd do it because I'd just go home that way, but that's all right.
Visit Frank on the way home.
Well, I imagine we're going to get mostly commuters going somewhere else. So they're going to want to get back on the main road.
But the traffic on one fourteen has gone through the roof.
Yeah.
And, you know, Flanders Memorial is a nightmare if you hit it after seven AM. Seven and eight thirty.
Don't have that trouble.
I understand that.
Well, undoubtedly, you, you will get customers going south, I mean, north on one fourteen. Maybe just loop around, I guess.
I think we covered it. Is that a motion?
Motion, we continue this till, when do you think you'd have this all done by?
Well, it, all, all we're looking for is just an update to the map. I can get it to the end of this month.
That's what we're looking for.
Yeah, then, then it shouldn't take me long to get everything updated and get it back to you guys.
April twenty-eighth, you're saying?
Today's fourteen.
Yeah, being twenty-eighth. Make a motion, we continue this till the twenty-eighth of April?
Bruce, the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Do you have a list?
I have a list.
You guys muttered, so I put it here.
I have a list. I was gonna give it to him. Here's a copy. That's not important.
Do you want this? That's true.
There's yours. There's his.
Didn't you add some things?
On the, on the map.
You wanna take this and get a photocopy of it anyway?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a complaint for a selectmen's representative. Somebody stole our recycled trash can right there. That's a complaint for you.
Oh, really?
We have a recycling bin missing.
Well, Naomi, can you take care of that?
Oh, jeez. No, I just got in trouble.
Yeah, yeah.
Item number six hundred and seven, six hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and forty-two on your list.
It was there. There's nothing over there in the corner?
There's a trash can, but not the recycle bin.
Oh, the recycle.
Been gone for a year.
I lug mine out. I lug it out and put it in the car when I leave. You know, like the state packs, you lug it in and you lug it out.
Carry out.
Yep, carry, carry. Except I carry so much in, I can hardly carry it back out again sometimes. So we got minutes from March tenth and March twenty-fourth. Let's look at the tenth ones. Still okay by me?
Make a motion, we accept the March tenth minutes as written?
I have one question. Who's T.A. Bolton?
You're? I'm just curious. Oh, I see it now, T.A. Bolton.
Must've been you.
Yeah.
Yeah, T.A. Bolton must be you.
Okay.
Is that you?
It's short for Town Administrator.
Oh.
Periods would've been good. T period, A period?
How big?
That's okay.
Well, he answered that one.
Yeah, I started calling her Tina Arlene or something.
I'll fix it. He's almost gonna confuse you with a couple of letters.
Jeez. We know now what it means, so it's okay. We've been educated for that.
It's in there a couple times, yeah. He didn't drill us, drill it into us the first time, Frank, it was.
Yep. Do we have a second? Yeah, I'll second it. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? March twenty-fourth. I wasn't here that day. I was required to.
See, see up top, you address yourself as interim land use coordinator, then you put T.A. down there, cause you're trying to save some finger work. I know, I saw that.
All the acronyms.
Acronyms, yeah. Fu bar.
Or snafu, which is. Can we add something to the granite state recycling? I thought I mentioned something about the floor of the building would have to be impervious, and at least a foot up the wall.
I think we mentioned that.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
Well, this was done by memory, cause the YouTube didn't come out, so.
That was, that was mentioned.
Yeah.
I think Bruce mentioned something about the wall being built up in and around it, so you wouldn't have leakage outside of it.
That's down off Ghul Road?
Yes.
That was supposed to be done when they actually put the building in it. When they did that, they were supposed to have an impervious flooring.
They did.
They did in the existing building, but when they did the new building.
This for addition.
New building isn't.
Well, yeah, we're just talking about it. We talked about it, but it didn't get into the minutes.
So what did you wanna add? We talked about the impervious calculation.
Yeah, right after that, we talked also about the floor in the building being impervious and, and constructed such that nothing would run out of the building. The floor can be back-sloped into the building.
Well, I was thinking they were actually wanted something.
That too, like a foot higher on that.
I think if you take my sentence, I'm not gonna count it down, I'm gonna count up. One, two, three, four, four lines up.
Certain concern.
If you say his only concern would be the impervious, take the word calculation out. And put floor and one foot of the wall.
Just one foot of the wall?
Yes, and that there'd be safeguards in place so that.
Nothing comes out of the building.
Sure. Then you agree, your concern was the impervious.
When is capital well, who looks at the monitoring results? Anybody?
What, and they test the water?
To be blunt, I don't know if anybody does.
Well, when the test results come in, it should be on the test whether anything failed standard test protocols. And hopefully, when the town got the test results, whoever receives those, if they see something that says something failed, they'd say something. Well, they're supposed to come in here annually and go into the property file, and I'm hoping whoever puts them in the property file.
I know, I know the first couple of years when Chip was still here, his came in. Cause Chip showed them to me and said, what am I supposed to do with these? Put them in the building file.
They're only testing once a year?
Everybody's testing, well, most people are testing once a year, yes. The new, people coming in for new applications down there, we're having them test once a year.
Well, a question probably should be asked, anyway.
Somebody oughta look at the test, look at the monitoring results, yes. I, I nominate Chuck Bolton to look at the monitoring as well.
You will.
And who has, who has the, who has this there?
I, I think the land use coordinators, that would be the land use coordinators.
That'd be interesting. Okay.
Could try, could try to put into this.
Could be the code enforcement officers' job.
Could try to put it for code enforcement.
That's what I would think would do it, code enforcement, right?
I think they probably automatically just filed out.
Oh, you think they just get filed, no one looks at them?
I have no idea. I can't tell you what happened.
Well, probably nobody can.
But if they went to Chip originally, they probably should be going to the.
Code enforcement, yeah.
They're gonna ask him.
It'll say right on there, fail or passed, I mean, you know.
Right, they're either passed or not. Somebody should say, oh, if they're not passed, somebody should be raising a red flag.
Right.
Same guy from Warner.
Yes.
He doesn't have to decipher the results, he just reads it, pass to fail, you know.
Well, theoretically, it should be compared to the last.
Alrighty.
Test result done previous, but. That's all I saw in the March twenty-fourth minutes. Of course, I wasn't here for the first half, so.
Make a motion, we accept the March twenty-fourth minutes as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Not abstained?
Abstained, brother.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jeez, man, you're tough. Anything else, Naomi?
Uh, just a reminder, you guys have a.
Oh, yes.
All-board joint meeting, works session.
What time is that?
Six thirty.
When?
Thursday the twenty-first.
Oh.
I'm gonna be out of town. You, you should've set that up at a different date.
You didn't check in with you leaving town first.
All right, Icarus.
Well, let's keep track of one again, or two again.
Six thirty-two, right, Naomi?
Six thirty.
I had it for six thirty AM, I noticed, and I moved it, I noticed.
Oh, good.
I was getting ready, yeah, I was getting ready to move it, I didn't move it to.
It's a work session. I think they gave you, gave you the email, right?
Yes.
I was confused as to which Thursday it was supposed to be where. Like, hey, dumpy, there were five Thursdays last month.
I'm like, no, you got a bonus, it's five Thursdays last month.
Don't feel bad. I pulled up in the parking lot on empty days too.
I don't think you pulled in the parking lot. Were you, were you here or were you?
No, 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 I just said, wait a minute, Thursday, well, hold on, hey.
Actually, someone else did the same thing.
I've been here before.
Remember you came to my office and asked if there was a meeting?
Yeah.
It was Thursday, yeah.
Cause there's a message from someone to someone about missing a meeting, and some other date of like two weeks ago, like what else going on?
Yeah, if it's Tuesday, this must be Belgium, come on.
I, I do have one question. So, in your village district, for a new building, if you look under Article twenty, it's like twenty-two six or twenty-two one, there's a gentleman that's building a new house in the, in Jason, Jono, whatever. Says, asks from here for.
Architectural review.
There you go, architectural review. What does he fill out? I had him fill out design review, I didn't know.
That's about all you can do, cause we don't have anything for that.
Okay. Cause he came to me and said he needed to come, and I'm like, all right, what do I have him fill out, so? So we had him fill out a design review, but he's got all his stuff, so he'll be on in two weeks.
Okay.
But do I notify the butters? It's a, it's a, you guys are looking at architectural of the building. I mean, I can notify butters, but we don't even have a form.
I would think that you probably want to notify him.
Yeah, I mean, I can. I just didn't know.
That's why they're benefit, so to speak.
What to fill out, so I had him just do the design review, cause I didn't know.
Yeah, I think you ought to notify the butters.
Yeah, I would notify.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll do that, but I just wanted you to know, so that's what you're looking at.
And we really wanna see.
You don't have the farmer's market and that one.
It says compatible architectural styles.
Well, there's a whole packet with pictures of all of the butters and any, what he's got for, planned for siding, and there's all sorts of little things with it, so.
Okay.
Where's this gonna be?
So family? Fresno Drive.
No, Village District.
Yeah, it's in the village. It's at Chase Village or Northway Village, Dover or Fresno Drive.
Like a homeowners association or something?
No, no.
Yeah.
It's only, right here.
But it said.
We got a Village District.
Does it, so.
But we have to, we have to prove it, yes.
Naomi, can I get a copy of the zoning stuff?
Yeah, I need to get Danny Jean one too.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
I need to get zoning board one too.
Is there anything else that we need?
What's the difference?
Site plan subdivision.
Those aren't in yet.
No, these aren't in yet. The new ones.
Well, one I don't see.
The new one's not.
Historic district's in red. The green's Village District. You're talking, I think she's talking about over here.
The FYI. Selectmen are talking about rentals on Monday night?
Short-term rental draft.
Residential rental draft.
This one, this Monday?
Yes.
Is that the, don't say Airbnb?
Yes, that's the one.
Airbnb.
Okay.
Actually, what, what the state's proposing, and what we've proposed, lines up with what the state's proposing perfectly.
I thought so, the way I read that.
So we actually could change it to be specifically towards short-term rental, because we align with what the state has allowed for towns to, to do for short-term rentals.
The mechanism is the same.
Right. So, at this point, that's a decision of the selectmen.
Seven o'clock?
I don't know how we are, we on the agenda?
Well, the meeting's not gonna start till seven.
Most of the towns are all aligned.
And then right after seven, cause we're walking on the tennis court first. And then at seven, we're coming over here for public comment. I have one reappointment to conservation, and probably that discussion. So I have a simple agenda. It'll be shortly after seven, depending on how much public comment.
For the tennis courts, yeah, probably won't be too much. Except for the people that wanna use it and the bounce, the ball bounces into Boston when it hits the ground.
Behind the American Legion?
Yeah, yeah.
Jeez, I'm impressed.
What do you see in the court?
Oh, no, I have it actually. Okay, now I got it. Anything else?
Yeah, I moved to adjourn.
Well, since we have a motion on the table, I can't bring anything else up. Do we have a second?
Second.
Good. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Let me go get those.